To the first town hall meeting, we're going to be having two of these. Feel free to come back to the next one, which is going to be next Sunday at Holy Trinny. In case we don't get all the information out tonight. I wanted to start to just say that this is being presented by the planning committee. And it's under the direction of Vestry. So the Vestry created the planning committee. The planning committee did work and reported back to the Vestry. Planning committee does not make any decisions. That's the Vestry's job. Vestry members, if you are here, Zol Holmes is senior warden, Jake, the junior warden, Kenny Bailey, Sharon Fullington, Grace Johnson. Sally Meek is on the committee and will be presenting tonight. Brian Morgan is on the committee, will be presenting, David Palet and myself. I wanted to be mentioned, and this has been said before, but Father Keith and Father James are not on the committee. They sit in from time to time and are advisors to the committee, but they are not a party to it and make no decisions for the committee or for the Vestry. So I want it very clear, this is our thinking, this is not their thinking. Questions so far?
Yes.
No? Okay. Father Keith?
I like how you tell them I'm an advisor and then call me up. Let us pray. First of all, Father, we just want to give you thanks and praise for this night. We thank you, God, for bringing us all together in your name. Merciful God, we just ask you to send your Holy Spirit on us and lead us as we make serious decisions, decisions on your behalf. Father, we just ask everyone here to have an open heart and mind to the Spirit itself. And may we all be led together as a family. May we reach out to our neighbors in spreading the Word of Christ. We thank you, God, for all the people and their hard work over the several months of working through this and to be able to present it to the church. And most of all, God, we thank you for Holy Trinity by the lake. And we thank you for your love. Well, I hope that you're excited. I really am, because over the last several months, I've been excited by hearing the things that are going on and all the things that happened here at Holy Trinity. It's hard to believe, but in May, I will be here a full five years. I'm in my fifth year now, but five years will be behind us. And it honestly seems like it was yesterday that I started here, but here we are anyway. If you remember, two things are happening here at the same time, and I wanted to talk to you about that. One is if you remember before you hired me, this church got together and through different ways came up with different goals that they wanted the Holy Trinity by the lake. What will Holy Trinity look like for the next five years? What does that look like? What kind of rector do we want? Who is it going to, what are they going to look like? What are some of the things that we want to see from our rector? Quite frankly, I think it was a whole new day for Holy Trinity and its history. And so y'all made that decision, and when several of us were interviewed, you told us about that and said, here are some of the goals that we have. And I'm sure, just like you asked me, you asked several other people, how do you feel about that? Personally, the people on the committee can tell you, I was actually excited by it. I understand there were some people who were a little frightened by some of the goals that you had, but I didn't, because I saw what was here at Holy Trinity by listening to the voices and how excited people were about Holy Trinity and where it was going. So you guys came up with a plan. You came up with goals for the next five years, and one was hiring me, and you brought me on for that. And I thank you. I thank God every day for you, and I'm so glad I'm here. But one of the things that we've done is we've worked so hard, we've actually achieved all those goals. And here we are. Here we are. People started, just to let you know what's going on, is this all started when people started coming to me, asking me questions after an annual meeting in which we showed how we were taking care of all those goals, and they were like, when are we going to make new goals? When are we as a church going to do that? And I said, well, we'll talk about that with the Vestry. And so our goals were being completed, but then something else happened in our history. We purchased the Louisiana Purchase next door. And I hope that if you could have had a check over at the Great Oktoberfest, you could have taken a drive on that, on the tractor and seen all that is out there. What I see from that is not just a piece of land. I see security for our children. I see our future. I see possibilities. And so I think I'm not the only one that felt like that. So what had happened is I started having people asking me questions about it. And so these two things came together. People started asking me questions like, what should we do about the overcrowding, the 10:30 service? And this group will tell you more about that in the parish hall. If you've been to any event here in the parish hall, you know exactly what I'm talking about. It's crowded. People were asking me about remodeling the kitchen, especially if you've worked in the kitchen. Most of the people came to me and said, when are we going to get a new stove? When are we going to get a, you know, anyway, you know what I'm talking about, because many of you are sitting right here. Then, like I said, what are we going to do about this new land? And I had people with different ideas. Not to call anybody out, but since he won't get mad at me tonight, Phil Collins is one of them that every single Sunday would pull me aside and saying, what are you prepared to do? He saw possibilities here at the church. Are we going to build a new church on the property? That was one of the questions. What should happen to the old church? By the way, I'm not knocking it down despite the rumors. That is not happening. But what will happen? And so people were starting to ask me ideas about that. And so, oh, that is on there. I didn't see that. They will never go away. Thank you for putting that in print. People also asked me about the overcrowding, as well as the big question, what are we going to do with the school building? And so that's another question. So what I did was I said, okay, I can't make those answers. But who can is the Vestry. And after all, you're elected people. And so I went to the Vestry finally after having so many questions, and I gave them all of these questions and the things I'm being asked. And so they decided, well, then we need to make a committee, because that's what Vestries do. And so they decided to make a committee here to start asking those questions, and what are the realistic answers? We can come up with all kinds of answers, but we need to know, what can we do that's a reality? And so one of the things that I wanted to make sure, and so did they, the Vestry wanted to make sure, is what does that, what does that committee look like? Because this particular committee, it's really important we pick out the right type of people. What I mean by that, equal men and women. We want to get views from everybody in this church. People who are married and unmarried, both voices count, and we want to hear about that. How about those with children and those without children? You look at the church differently, and we want to get the voice for that. And then representation of all age ranges, from young adults to our retired members. Because we all have a way of looking at the church and what we're looking for for our future. And so we wanted to make sure that that happened, and it did. And so I'm very, very excited. Again, and I'm getting ready to stop, I'm very, very excited. I was called in as an advisor. There are some things that we, believe it or not, learn in seminary and remember, and so we bring that out and allow the, when the committee is saying, well, we should do this, well, remember, you want to be careful of this or that, and here's why. And giving historical data, since we've only had 2,000 years of doing a Christian church, we have a little bit of that. And so I'm brought on as an advisor. I want to say I'm excited as your rector. I absolutely love you guys, and I cannot wait to see where our future takes all of us together. I think this is a historic time for Holy Trinity, as well as a godly time for Holy Trinity. So I hope that you will listen and hear, and as well as ask questions, because everything here at Holy Trinity, as I promised from day one, is transparency. And that is what we have here, and we want to talk about it together. So are you ready?
Ready.
All right. It's all yours. Thank you very much. I remember the first time I saw this picture, especially since Terry sent it to me, this with my drone, and I was thinking, wow. And I said, wow, you better call up and get our junior warden to come fix it. Fascinating. I did say, wow, and he did refer this picture. And what's great about it is the rugged beauty of that steeple, the lake in the background, and that campus. And it's just gorgeous. I mean, it's really special. We all know that, y'all know that, but what we may not know is the history. Didn't happen by accident, didn't happen overnight. It took a long time. So how did we get here? In 1896, a group from Forney organized a mission. And then in 2002, they put $2,800 and built the church. 1994, it got moved from Forney to Rockwall, Indiana. So from very humble beginnings, it became very, or very, very bold moves. After that, there was a 1994 planning committee. Now, I don't like what we have here today, talking about the future of the church. And from that, it led to the expansion of the church in its present state, the back name. The building of this parish hall, the parking lot, I heard it used to be gravel and so much, I'm going to pardon that. And then the new education. Boldness yet again. With each of these bold moves came, obviously, expansion projects. So expansion's nothing new to Holy Trinity, right? We've come a long way, and so what's next? So first we want to look at is where are we at now? Here are the numbers. I'm the fun, new numbers guy, right? Which you can see, there's a very positive, healthy trend lines on some major components of the health of the church. The pledges are up, 161,000 since last five years. Operating lead comes up, 210,000. Membership is up to 501 as of last month. So we reached the 500 mark for membership. That's amazing. How do the members equate the households? I say with love and respect, Tom took it to time, Mr. Particulus. He took a map, and he went and took the congregation and put a different coordinated color of him for where the current members live.
Hey, Tom!
Yeah. So if you're not on the realm, he took the addresses from realm. So if you don't find yourself on here, I challenge yourself to find yourself. And then these are all people from the outside that didn't fit on the map. So the point here is, yeah, there is a cluster in this community, in this neighborhood, but this is a broad community. We draw from a large area of the state. So the next question is, so how does all this growth translate into worship? And what's perplexing is the increase in membership we've seen hasn't resulted in a corresponding increase in attendance at the worship services. So you see, the top line is the total membership. The second line, blue line, is total average Sunday attendance. And the bottom line is our main service, the 10:30 service. So you see the last three years, they've been kind of flat. Why? I have my theory. I hear St. Greg Fox's cologne.
I hope it's not.
And that explains it. But there's more learned people on the committee, and they corrected me, and they were talking about the survey. And then some of the advisors started telling us about this 80/30. So that was something that I hadn't heard before. But essentially, it's based on human perceptions. At 80% or more, people have the perception that this is too crowded, there's no room for me. Or think of it as a good vacancy sign, so to speak. It's also referred to as comfortable capacity, not to be confused with conspicuous consumption. But nonetheless, I think of it as, the first time I heard of it, the elevator at the office. You know, I raced to get it, doors open, I go to step in, it's not really full, but there's people in it. And they hold the door, and they back up, and they say, come on in. And I see there's room, but I'll get the next one. Comfortable capacity. Less than 30%, it's too empty, there's nothing happening here. So with 55% of our average Sunday attendance going to the 10:30 service, you do the math, that's about 110 people, and that's 73% of our 150 capacity. With our new pew configuration on the back side, again, it's got perceptions, so there's no side aisle, so you just have the center aisle. So there is some discussion about that gives perception to of crowdedness, because you don't have that side aisles that is a buffer. Something else to consider, we thought was noteworthy, was Easter Sunday attendance, which is 231 and 251 at the 10:30. So clearly above the 150. So there's questions about what we can do to nurture and enhance participation levels to our existing members. There's also questions about potential for the outreach and future growth. So, yeah, these are some of the demographics that go with the map that Tom did over here. So you can actually kind of see the growth from the different subsections of the county.
Also, there's a copy of that over there, because as soon as we go to the next screen, you won't remember those. So that will be up there, so you can go and peruse that at your leisure.
Okay. I was out of town. These are these are edits, I guess, so I apologize. So is anything new on the map that I have?
Nope.
Just that one thumb pack. Yeah. This key is also on the top left that I referred to earlier. Okay. So these are some of the authoritative resources that reflect the growth of Rockwall County. The Rockwall Economic Development Corporation has it 3% historically, well, 2.8. Growth projections are 3.2, roughly the same for the Rockwall ISV has this at 3.1 through 2028, so next 10 years. And the U.S. Census, historically, would grow at 3.3. Comparatively, Holy Trinity by the Lake membership from 2013 to present is up 52%, 53% or 10% annually. Average Sunday attendance, again, doesn't mirror that even closely, but it's 5.8% annually. So, you know, the historical objective demographics support an ongoing opportunity for Holy Trinity by the lake to accomplish our primary mission of spreading the Word of Christ, as well as continue to serve and enrich the membership and the community. Next steps, will be trying, Morgan?
So I'll, I guess, begin sort of by recapping what David said. You can see on here, I mean, what he basically says, we are growing. We have grown, we're going to continue to grow, and we're overcrowded. So, you know, now the question is, you know, we got to go figure out what we're going to do about this. The current reality is that our parish hall, this parish hall can't adequately accommodate when we have parish-wide events. An example I'm reminded of is back at our Shrove Tuesday last year, the pancake supper, where this room was designed to have 100 people sit down for a potluck dinner when we did that. That was the design goal when we did this, and we had significantly more than that. So additionally, we're bouncing up against that Alvin Institute criteria that David mentioned, the 80% rule in our 10:30 service. So, you know, the issue is that we've sort of come to a conclusion that we can't really fully realize our mission, that our facilities are somewhat hampering us in our ability to fully recognize our mission. So the Vestry sort of started with the committee. We began to work on, what are we going to do about this? So we began, the committee began a two-pronged approach. So the first is that we went off to determine, you know, what can we do in the short term? What are potentials that could be addressed, you know, right now? And then we started looking at what are longer term, and we'll talk about both of these. The longer term is more about a survey, which we'll talk about, because we think we need to get a lot, but more the voice of this parish involved in that process before we do anything else. But we broke it into two pieces, so we're going to talk about them both, and we'll talk about the short term first. So first, for the short-term solutions, we're looking at basically three things. One is, one is a parish hall expansion with some kitchen updates, we'll talk about that. And then there's a future expansion potentially of the church. Now, the Vestry's considering this parish hall expansion. It would add approximately 50 additional seats into this building, so we're going to talk about how that works. If it's approved, actually, construction of that could begin immediately. It could be finished, you know, early in the next year by February of 19. There's some kitchen updates that have been included in that that we'll, that we'll talk about. Designed, and one of the things it's going to do is improve our coffee service, but I think that's something that, A, we're burning our coffee back there, but B, we just can't seem to turn out enough between the services to serve you. That's, that's taken care of there. And then there's revisions to the kitchen just to make it work better.
Functional.
And then we're also investigating expansion of the church nave, which would add also about an additional 50 seats. So we'll sort of look at both of these. So the short-term solution, the idea is pushing out this west wall, the one over here. The parish hall, just in front of these, the trees that are out there, and that adds approximately room for 50, for 50 additional seats. The trees that are there, colbarium, those things are unaffected, it doesn't touch any of that. We would rotate these two doors, would be rotated 90 degrees on the outside of the building, as you can see in the picture. We'll raise the tree canopy high, so we don't lose the lake view we have from here. And we'd still be able to get from the parish hall, you know, to the church as we can do now, all undercover in inclement weather. I hope people do that, you can walk out these doors and get straight into the church. This is a plain view of that, that shows the expansion. Also note that the hallway, the library, the restrooms, all of the other rooms in the building would not be altered in any way presently with that plan. So it would only be enlarged from the room that we have right here. With that comes some renovations, there we go, some renovations to the kitchen. One of the things we're going to do is add a pass-through back there where they're standing in the, in the back of the room. It was originally in the original plans when we did this building, we weren't able to do it. It was a cost-saving effort.
We have four bananas, a couple of bananas over there.
But that will be built going into the new kitchen. It's a built-in cabinet on this side and the other side that gives a little bit of storage, and it creates a serving counter, so that when we're having potluck suppers and the such, that we can, we can use that, and it eliminates the need to put these buffet tables out here, which you can put tables there for people to sit at, which further increases the room that we have for people to stand and seat at those parish-wide kinds of events. So the new kitchen is just a remodel of what we have, and we'll note some of the things that it has. It has new cabinets being there, and all new appliances, including a generic, you know, dishwasher like we see at our, in our houses. It would have two refrigerators with ice makers included, the two large refrigerators, which would be on the wall over here on the, on the west side, along with the large double ovens and microwave. So that entire wall here would be, would be ovens and refrigerators and microwave. It would have a new cooktop, quartz countertops would be added to that. And then the pantry, the room that's to the left, sort of behind the thing that we've sort of been using to storage, would be revamped, and that becomes our pantry and our, in our storage area, so it would give us more storage. So that's a relatively straightforward remodel of this, and it seems to make a lot of sense. So the other thing that we looked at is around the sanctuary. As we mentioned earlier, we can, we can look at expanding the nave. The expansion we're looking at would add approximately 50 seats. It would make the nave much more handicap accessible than it presently is, make it easier to get in. Also, this expansion would add a restroom, it would actually be a handicap accessible restroom, it would add a restroom into, into the north ex, which is something many people have noted that we've needed, because if you find that need, you have to come either over to this building or down the stairs, so it would have addressed that. That program, should we do it? It would take about five months to, to do that, and, you know, it, it could begin fairly soon. So they've shown the picture here, but the way this would be done is would add a transept on the east side of the building. It would be added right there with our, sort of the existing north ex. Again, it gives us about 50 seats. We believe that gives us enough capacity, when we look at all the demographic data, that would hold us up to about five years, so we'd be able to address our needs for the next five years. And be attached, like I said, it'll match all the existing architecture displayed with what's done previously. And so hopefully, pull it off, you wouldn't be able to, if you didn't know, you wouldn't have known it was a little expansion project. So the next view sort of shows you an interior view of how that would look. It would add seven 12-foot fixed pews, which those 12-foot pews are about what we have in the, in the front section, so it'd add 12, seven of those 12-foot pews. There's also space in front of those pews for handicap seating or the addition of chairs when those are needed for larger events. Those are, a better ramp system's built to get into the north ex, and as I mentioned, there's a handicap accessible bathroom is installed into that, into that space there. You can see, if you could point to it, there's one up there. Can you help me see where the restroom would be?
Well, excuse, excuse my channel.
Very challenged, aren't you?
I am very challenged. But the, the north ex is right here, so you would be able to go into the north ex through the foyer into the transept. A ramp will be built going into the north ex, so you can get into the north ex and get into the church.
Without having to go to the far back row, back of the back entrance that you have to.
This area is wheelchair accessible, so wheelchairs, walkers, the, if you're, if that's required, I think that's going to happen. You can sit there. And all of that will take place behind where the piano currently is. The piano does not have to move, and anything associated with that is unaffected by all of this. I'm going to get down before I miss it.
Okay. So these are sort of cost projections, and what we've been able to look at. And these, these numbers are in various stages of review and the bidding process. Some of them are a little more mature than others. The kitchen refurbishment is a very firm bid that we had in front of us, we expect the final bid on the parish hall project here instantaneously. We do last week, hadn't turned it yet, but, but, so where we stand is, there's a little over $150,000 of undistributed funds, which have been dispersed by our endowment committee, that have been dispersed to the Vestry. There's been a tremendous amount of outreach work that's been done, and even with that, there's that, those funds are there. So that leaves about $100,000 shortfall from if we were to do all of these things. things now. It leaves us about a hundred thousand dollars of shortfall. So the real question is, you know, what do we do? So as a parish, do we, you know, do we support these short-term solutions? It's part of why we're, we're here, we want to talk to people, hear what people have to say. Question is, you know, could we collectively, you know, dig a little deeper and, and make up that, that hundred thousand dollars in short-term if we decide this is what we want to do? So I'd like people to think about that. Now, before we talk about the next steps in looking at the longer-term, I'd sort of like us to stop here, maybe we entertain some questions, we threw a lot at you, and then we'll, we'll wrap up by talking about the next steps in the survey and the longer-term plan.
Where's the coffee?
Where's the coffee?
It's over at the kitchen, but you, there was not a location on the coffee.
See where the coffee is, right out there? There's going to be a cabinet there, and the water line is going to run out to that cabinet, and it's going to be the big area for the coffee.
Like you mix it fast? You're like, you've seen those tall ones?
I want to thank you.
You've seen the tall industrial ones, you'll see it, places like a Starbucks where you can have those things, and it's that kind of thing that rapidly makes larger...
So it'll all be out there, you don't even have to go in there. Thank you.
Yes, sure.
How much do we have left on our current mortgage?
So the exist, Allison can tell us exactly, but it's not tremendous.
One sixty-something.
Yeah, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand.
I can't give you an exact number, but one sixty to one sixty.
What's the question?
Oh, sorry. Her question was, what is the remaining mortgage or loan balance that the church has on the, on the education wing? The answer is about a hundred and sixty. The, the Vestry's been concentrating, at the time I've been on it, this time, that we've been concentrating on, on paying that down quite a bit. We refinanced it, we had to, because it was coming up against the balloon, so we refinanced it, and it's been paid down, but do you, does anybody remember, you might remember, David, what the exact number is?
And we're paying extra.
I'm looking it up.
Yeah, show them.
We're paying a thousand dollars a month extra every month on the principal.
I wondered about three, a little over three thousand.
Oh, the old payment was three thousand and something, the new payment is fifteen, twenty-something, and then we've been paying an additional principal only payment of one thousand dollars a month. And I'm looking it up to see what the...
So it's a low interest rate, okay?
So the, the payment itself decreased quite a bit, which helped us a whole lot support the, the operating needs we had, but, but through our budget, we were able to add an additional thousand dollar principal. And I'll look that up, Ryan, while you're talking.
Okay, sure. It's, it's been coming down, so it's a, it's a moving, or, yes?
Do you have a group plan for people to drive up and let handicapped people out without getting wet, or older people without getting wet?
So not, not presently addressed in what we're... She was asking about if we had a plan where you could drive into like a, a board shag, get into the church without getting wet, which is an excellent idea, by the way, but has not been presently addressed in what, what we're doing here. So we couldn't.
Swift and easy.
Yeah. Jake Currie's in there.
We're entering a busy time of the year for the parish hall. If we start rebuilding now, will it be accessible and usable during that time?
Yeah, the, the way it's been presented to us is that there, there might be a very short period of time, could be near the end of it after, after Christmas, where we might have to not use the building, but the construction would all be done on the outside, and then, then knocking out the windows and the wall and dealing with this, it would be external to what we're doing. Lennox?
Yeah, that's my question, I think it's about the windows. I'm sure you probably thought of it and have, I can't tell from the drawings where the windows would end up.
In, in the, in the nave?
Yes.
Yeah, there would be, they'd be relocated because of the ones that are, actually, Ross, Ross Ramsey's been the architect that's been, been working this, and the plan is to actually just reuse the windows that we have. So they would just be re...
Moved down.
Re-moved.
They're not going away.
Nothing's going away.
They're not going to end up in a bathroom.
No.
No, they are not going away in, in...
And they don't end up in a bathroom.
No.
On, on this view, you can get up close and see, but one of the existing windows will still be in the same location. One of them will be on the side of the transept. There will be three new ones on the front, on the east side of the transept, and another one going, going the other way. So all of the windows that we currently have will still be used. We're, we're still deciding, and I don't want to micromanage the, the, I'm not on the architectural committee, but, but potentially, the three windows that are on the east side, two of them can be existing, and we would have one new one, because architecturally it looks better to have a larger one in the center, and also, I think spiritually, it's, it's better to have the larger one in the center.
Any other, girl, are you...
And they don't have the windows that are up in one of them, and they have all of them, they don't have them in that picture?
Yeah, he didn't draw them in.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not going in.
No, nothing's changed in there, he just didn't draw them in.
No, the intent is, just like with the last restoration, that that looks like, you would never be able to tell that it was in check.
The balance of mortgages, one sixty-one, three-one-eight.
Okay.
Oh, still.
She should know. Any other questions? Yes?
I just have a question. The sacristy, has that been addressed particularly for apolites and E M's vestments, as well as storage for the altar guilds?
So at this point, what we're talking about, there's, there's no changes to, no changes to the sacristies? Or we're presently looking?
No storage in other areas or any place else?
Not here.
It was actually addressed, just real quick, it was addressed, but we just don't know what to do. I mean, we're so limited in what we have, and so, because for me, I really would like to have more room as you can imagine, but we just don't know what to do. But it wa, it was addressed.
Yeah, okay.
Big time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there a second date?
Are they estimating it would take to do...
To do the, the, the church part or this part? For this part, they're thinking about three months to do this, and about five months to do the church. And, you know, if we decided that we wanted to do this and figured out how we would, we'd pay for it, it could be done concurrently. Actually, there's a little bit...
How does this parish hall, newly configured form play into the larger plans of the future when there's a new church?
We don't know. We don't know. I'm sure that this building will be, will be used, maybe repurposed to who knows when. I don't think we'd be raising anything on our amp set.
But it's also, it's also possible, and if eventually we build something over there, that there is a floor underneath the church based on the way this, the, the land is, that could be a parish hall without building a new parish hall. And then how we use that building as an education building could inform how we use this too.
Yeah, but we don't know the answer, so that's part of actually the next discussion. Anything else? Okay. We're going to go one more slide. So, thank you for that. So what we want to talk now about is the, is the longer-term plan. So as Keith talked about, this is an aerial view of what we have. On the right side, you have the four and a half acres that we're sort of all used to that we're presently sitting on, and there's the nine acres that we own that is immediately to the east of us. And I don't know if everybody got a chance, I was actually amazed when we took that hay rite and how large that, that property is, there's a lot of room over there. But, so that's what we have. And then the question is, there's a long-term vision, you know, what do we, what do we need to do to be prepared to address whatever our needs are ten years, fifteen years, twenty years into the future? So that's why this committee has, has formed a, has formed a survey, that we all need to participate in this, because there's just a huge number of things nobody knows the answer to about what does anything, we all there. But we need to make sure that we got the real voice of the, of the parish in this. The initial survey's going to be released on, on November nineteenth, which is the day after we have second one of these meetings. And it's going to ask, it's about, I've got to be honest, it's a bit of an essay test. It's going to ask you some questions, some demographic things about, you know, about who you are, about, you know, age-wise and that kind of stuff, which service you like to go to, what do you like about Holy Trinity, the type of service you prefer, which service you prefer to go to, those kind of things. Then it's going to address, you know, what do we think should be done with the acquired land, other things that you think are needed to help, to help expand the mission of Holy Trinity by the way, and our, our mission is spreading the word of Christ here in this, in this community. We're taking the information there, and there'll be subsequent surveys after that to try to further hone what we're doing before anybody makes any kind of plans. So we've been intentionally very open-ended about, about these questions. We said that we're not giving you multiple choices on how you, you know, what should be done with that land, or, or any, any of the things that there's other options that the diocesan might take or anything like that. We've left it totally open. We want people to put their ideas down, we didn't want to cede any ideas, but trying to make up a list of possible solutions. So that's why I'm saying it's a bit of an essay, to get some demographic stuff, which service you like and that kind of stuff, and then, then we, we need you to write down what you think, what you feel, and then we'll, we'll compile that information, and then we'll get back together, just like this again, and we'll talk about what, what that says, and hopefully we'll have a little bit better focus when we're back in it. So with that, Sally, want to wrap this up?
And this is really an exciting time of Holy Trinity. A lot of the growth that has occurred, a lot of the growth that has occurred, I would think has to do with the fact that this church and Father Keith had the foresight to come up with a five-year plan, and really think about what we would need to serve the whole community. And so now, in a sense, we're ready to look at our strategic plan, to look at the next five years, the next ten years, the next fifteen years, and twenty years. Now, we also have, like we've talked about, some immediate needs in terms of space, and the Vestry has been looking at that and exploring that, and we've shared with you kind of what we're exploring. So the next step is going to be getting information from you on that survey, and the idea is that the survey, for the most part, will be online. So after that November eighteenth meeting, you will get a survey on the nineteenth, for anybody that doesn't like to use a computer, doesn't like to do it online, there are a whole bunch of those that would be happy to bring you a paper ballot and get that filled out, and we'll get the information in. And we'd like to have those back by December the third, so that we can start correlating that, and then see what we need to ask next. And, and like Ryan said, that first survey is very open-ended. We want all the ideas that you guys have, because we have a committee, you know, a very diverse group of people, but I'm sure you have ideas that we may not have thought of. Okay, so what questions do you guys have? So, yes, Jack?
The survey that you're talking about, this, there's a preliminary one, and I had a conversation, there's probably subsequent ones as well, but we just talked about a quarter of a million dollar project that could start immediately. Are we committed, has the Vestry made a vote on whether we're going to go forward with the quarter of a million dollar project?
The Vestry has not voted on that. That's something that we've been exploring, because it appears that we could be losing people that might come to Holy Trinity, because they walk in and, and there's just no place for them to sit when they come to the parish hall, and there's no place for them to be. So we're afraid that we might need to do something fairly quickly with that. What we really wanted to do in terms of the survey was look at the larger future, five years down the road, ten years down the road. Certainly, we want your input on all of it, though.
And as I understand, there's a hundred thousand dollar shortfall in available cash.
Yes.
Are there options being explored for how that could be fixed?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, there are a myriad. One is that, I mean, we, it's, it's, it's a large sum, but in the aggregate among all of us, it's not a, it's not an insurmountable sum. I mean, we were able to raise seventy-eight thousand dollars when we fixed, remember how bad the floor wasn't here?
Yes.
When we all decided that we wanted to fix that, you know, we did it. We didn't take out a loan, we didn't do anything, we just, we just all sort of dug a little deeper, and people donated, you know, some funds in, and we made it happen. So, so we're doing this, we're open-ended. I don't know, is it, we want to try to approach it in that kind of manner, or, or what do we want to do? But that's part of why we want to have these meetings, to see if people think we're heading in the wrong direction. But, but we are concentrating more in the, the really long-term, the ten, fifteen, twenty...
Jack, to answer your question specifically, the Vestry has not yet voted, because we don't have a firm bid, and until we have a firm bid, we don't have a lot to vote on.
My concern is the hundred thousand dollars recovered.
Yes. Mine too. We don't have a present plan on how that would be addressed.
But that money could be needed in the next five, six months.
It would be, it would be very, uh, an immediate, if they're, if you're talking about...
There's a myriad of solutions that could be looked at, but, but we haven't looked at, I mean, it could be borrowed, it could potentially be borrowed internally from the endowment fund, it could be raised from the parishioners, but none of that's been looked at specifically. We just throw it out, that is, that is the question, how do we deal with that?
And then, what did you, no, wait.
First of all, thank you, guys, all of you. I know I've done a lot of work. We have five hundred and one members, we've got approximately fifty people in this room, at least ninety percent of the people that aren't going to be, is there a plan, minus the reduction of the kids and so forth, to get approximately other eighty percent involved? How do we do that?
Well, this is being taped, and I'm sure we're going to put it on Realm, and we're going to put it on Facebook. And if you have other suggestions, because we do need to really communicate as much as possible with everybody.
We are doing this again.
Yeah, we, we, there's a town hall meeting that's going to be on Sunday night, but the hope is that it will be a little bit bigger attendance than this, just starting the round line. But it's going to be very similar, have the exact same presentation. And, you know, tell your friends, because they need to, everyone needs to hear this, so they have the facts. I mean, because, because we're all family here, we're all doing this together. So you got a question?
Okay. There were, there were numbers presented way back at the beginning about what is, and I missed it, our ASA.
Go back.
I mean, just, just whatever it is, our, our average Sunday attendance or our average weekend attendance is one.
We have approximately right now, and then at point ten, for ten thirty.
So I was just trying to extract away that versus the hundred thousand dollars, you know what I mean? If, if it's immediate.
And then the question is, this area, all the areas around us are growing, so we know, and as, as vibrant as this church is, it's growing along with that. So do we do it now and be ready for that growth, or do we wait?
Each of the services is there, you see them?
Okay.
So I want to thank our Peter, we did...
I think, well, I know what you're asking, and, and one of the things is, yes, it's like two oh one, but remember, there are people who will come. So in other words, there's more people than there's two oh one that are coming. There are people who come once a month, except for, that would be part of that that unfortunately drops the average on attendance. But there are members here, and there are active members here, so I would hope that, I think that's what they're trying to look at.
The numbers, girl, says this is about two hundred, we need one hundred thousand, that's five hundred bucks a block.
Right, that, that is, because I'm a very bottom-line person, that's, obviously, that's what I was trying to, yeah, for any question.
So, Jack?
I just want to be sure, my vision being poor, that all these slides are going to be on Realm or somewhere.
Yes.
All that's...
The entire PowerPoint will be on Realm. We're trying to find some technical person so that we can take the PowerPoint and merge it with the audio recording that we have. We are filming it now, and, and if that hi-tech doesn't work, we can post the video. So we've got backups to the backup.
I want to be very clear, from clergy side, Vestry side, and this committee side, we will be very transparent and reach this to every single member of this church. Now, whether they choose to come to this or not, it's going to be their business. We have advertised it like crazy, even tonight I shot out something on Facebook, remember the town hall meeting? And we will do that this coming week for next Sunday, because it's very important to me that everybody comes. Now, whether they will or not, I don't know, because... Now, whether they will or not, I don't know, because let's be honest, if somebody's upset, they have to come soon. I really want to take care of this as fast as possible.
No, seriously, people will, so.
I will make sure this is good now.
That's why you get the big phone.
Exactly.
Read the bottom line on the side.
Oh, thanks a lot, I appreciate you.
Please make a look at that.
Charity, if you like what all has been discussed, Brian and I, David will be happy to talk to you. If you don't like it, then there's charity.
I have something, because it is all Jack Brown's fault. Because, no, I'm teasing, he raised a question, the survey that's going to come out on the nineteenth, is that addressing the short term?
No.
That's what, just the long term.
Just the long term.
So is there an avenue in which, if there's something that comes up that you think about the short term to address or to be able to write, tell the vestry?
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is.
The very last question is, what have we forgotten? What else would you like to speak about?
So is that either the long term or the short? Okay.
It's primarily the long, to talk to you, I must say.
Right, okay.
Talk to the vestry.
My question is, are there architectural renderings already prepared, done?
There are the engineering.
Which ones in the year?
For the short term?
Yeah, for the short term, so there's, yeah, there's.
Their engineering drawings done.
And they've been paid?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. You gotta do that to get the.
To get the bid.
To get a bid.
Yeah, and if you have, if you want to see more detail, I, we can, Betty and I can show you much more and Vicki can show you much more detail about the kitchen, Kirsten, Matt, and then Ross and Terry. Brian can show you more detail about the church, so on David and the parish halls.
One clarification on the survey, it may not be clear, is that's five individuals by adult, it's not my household. So you and your spouse, any child over eighteen or above, any member should do the survey. It's not one verb household.
Let everybody breathe in the same house.
I do have something I want to express from the committee is that the eighty-three rule was new to me. It's not something Father Keith or Father James brought to our committee that they made up. Yes.
Just real quick, when you talk about this eighty-three rule, yeah, it's not something I just made up. We're actually talking, by the Alden Institute, Alden Institute is, I think you've all agreed about them, are incredible. They actually help churches and other groups with different surveys and stuff to get them to truly understand who they are. And so this eighty-three rule, matter of fact, if you go into it, matter of fact, with the group, I didn't even go into specifics, I was just telling them about it, but the Alden Group looks at people who actually like to be at least twenty-four inches apart. In other culture, at least, twenty-four inches apart.
More than thirty inches.
And so actually, the latest, I was just looking at the latest, and it's about, if it's fifty-four percent full, people starting to feel crowded today. We love our space. But the eighty percent rule is that it's the perception, not actual number. If the perception of a room is eighty percent full, people will come, new people will come and say, there's no room for me. The problem is, is you also get people who feel a little crowded and they decide, I'm just going to come every once a month. Now, I don't know how it works, but for some reason, all those people who do that seem to always come on the same Sunday. That's what we'll get, yeah, that's what we'll get, you know, two hundred and twenty people. If we have a funeral, if we have big events, it's packed, as you've all been seeing, okay? And so it is a perception, as I told the group, it's the same thing as we have, all of us have done this. You see four people or five people in line in the back, or maybe the grocery store, you put down your stuff and you walk out and say, I'll come back later, I don't have time for this. Well, you don't know that one group, maybe a whole family, and they all walked up and it's just one person and they walk out and you would have been next in two minutes. But the perception is, look at all the people. We all do it, and that's what I want people to understand on the committee. So it's not that I'm trying to say, this is actually, no, this is science, and people do react to it. The truth is, I took pictures, matter of fact, who was it, somebody was singing and I took pictures, Marlo was singing, and I took pictures of the group, and if you look at it, it is over perception-wise eighty percent full. And this was a normal Sunday, this wasn't like a high Sunday or something. So what I'm concerned with, one of the things we, the question was asked me immediately, and the reason this all came up, is our, well, you can't see, I'm here in beautiful picture, by the way, I love that. But the membership is going like this, but about a year, a year and a half ago, suddenly our average Sunday attendance started straight.
Why did he do the picture?
I'm reading it.
That's what I'm trying to get to, see? And now we're boxed in this problem. And we're not okay yet. See, we have these problems to take care of.
But you also talk about, so when it's eighty percent full, people kind of go, oh, it's too full. But talk on the other side of this.
The flip side, that's right. If somebody comes in and it looks less than thirty percent full, the opposite happens. And they're like, there's not a whole lot for me, there's not a whole lot for my children. And so we're going to go and check out the Methodist church down the street. It wasn't twenty, thirty years ago that, I don't care if you didn't like the rector, you still came to church every Sunday. Well, those days, remember, I wish I kept this article I had one time, it was called, "The Days of the Rosie Chief Priests Are Gone." And it's because of this, where people used to come every Sunday, no matter what, well, now we've become consumers, big-time consumers. So if I don't like it and it looks thirty percent, I'll go to the Methodist, I used to be a Episcopal, that's all right. Or let me go to the Baptist and check out that. So they're looking for certain programs to purchase in a way. And so this is something that really puts a lot of stress on me because when I see, there we go, yeah, I won't touch it. When I'm watching this go up, but the average Sunday attendance suddenly is leveling, that's an issue. Now, I would say, we have a lot, I was telling the group, we have a little bit of an issue here, we had some county issues. It's actually a little bit higher than that, but we're just talking maybe like seven, we're not talking, I don't want to go there. But that's a problem. So people are joining our church, they love our church. The other issue that I have as a priest in trying to do things for Holy Trinity is notice I've never advertised for us. I have never put things on doors, I've never written letters to new people who are moving to the community. And people have asked me why, because I really believe in doing it. My answer, I told the committee, is I'm scared they're going to come. Okay? No, you say no, that sounds weird, doesn't it? Here's the problem, in the eighty percent rule, they give you one shot and one shot only in this consumer world and they leave and they will never be back. I don't want them to see that, I want them to come and stay.
So we're kind of saying that we may miss out on that growth.
Absolutely. And so what it is, is let's be honest, we're in an instant gratification type society. And so if I go and you've invited me and there's no room for my children or for me, let me go try another church or maybe staying at home on Sunday. I'm telling you, look up the Alden Institute, they'll tell you, it's not Keith coming up with these statistics.
Well, one other thing, think about when they're building new baseball, football stadiums, they're making the seats bigger.
Yes.
And that's, there's a reason for that, because people are getting bigger.
Great example, that's exactly right, people are getting bigger in baseball stadiums, you're exactly right. The only people who are not making bigger seats are airlines. Trust me, I was on one just an hour and a half ago and they don't.
Nobody likes the airlines anymore.
Yeah, so they don't like.
Go on that problem.
So anyway, it is one of the things, because we're coming up on the Year of Evangelism, I talked about five years ago. So now I've got a dilemma. What do I do? Because I really want to do the Year of Evangelism. Matter of fact, I already have in my mind what I want to shoot out next year, a slogan that I want all of us to look at. I'm not going to tell you yet, it's not twenty nineteen. But I really am concerned with that. So this is why I personally, I will tell you, any changes, I know people think I like changes, not as much as you think. I'm actually very traditional, and so when some of these ideas came, even I was like, wait a minute, I've been really looking. But sometimes we don't have a choice. As I told, I'm going to stop here because I want y'all to go home. But this church is actually famous for making very bold moves. In eighteen ninety-six, we made a bold move, we made a purchase of a church in Fornie. We made a huge, bold move to move a church from Fornie to Eaton, Texas. If you don't think the rector was holding his breath the entire time of that thing falling over, I promise you, it was the boldest move I think I've ever seen because a lot of things could have been bad, okay? What about the extension of the church? I guarantee you, there were people that probably were not exactly happy, they may not have voiced, but they probably weren't. But we expanded the church. We don't like change, but we are famous in this church for making bold moves. And so I think, again, we need to see what is God calling us? We are looking at this entire population around us that is going to get huge and we've got to be able to answer the call. If we don't, I promise you, there's others that will, okay? We already have one English church, we have another English church that just opened up. And so they're looking, so there are others that will be glad to do it. But there's no place like Holy Trinity, and one of the things I love, and I'm not saying this to make you feel good, but one of the things I do is I call and write a letter to each person who visits and I talk to them about their experience. And the one thing they say is, you are the most friendly church I have attended. That's because of you, and that's what we need to do. And I make you, I'll make you this promise too, because I learned this, you're in my John Omer class, you'll know what I'm talking about. But no matter how big we get, we need to still stay a family. And it needs to feel like a family, and people need to feel like they belong. And they need to feel that they can rely on us when problems hit them, or they need to celebrate. And if I can have that from you guys, we will be okay as we continue into the future and what the future's going to look for us. And Keith, do you mind sharing with them what the visitor told you as they were leaving and grabbed me and brought you back and said? Oh, oh, here in the, yeah, there's all, this happened, what was, when, what were we having? Backpack Sunday. And we had a new visitor and she was at St. Timothy's, that unfortunately was a mission that did not make it. And I want you to know that in missions, four out of five don't. So there's nothing wrong with that, but still, it hurts the people who belong to it, it's a real hurt. And so she was, and so they've actually been checking out different churches throughout the area. She came to me, we were standing in line, and she grabbed me by the arm and she pulled me back and she said, hey, we have been church shopping and I want you to know, this is the friendliest church that we have attended and we love it. And I said, that's great, that's what I hear. I went to walk off, she grabbed my arm again and she said, but you need to expand, you don't have enough room. So we got that feedback from someone and that was just a few weeks ago.
So we've also had people complain about bathroom accessibility.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. I want you to know that we actually have parishioners that belong to this church that have called me. And the reason they don't come to church, it was two or three, I cannot remember, I'm sorry, I want to say it's three, but I'm going to say, I know two for a fact. The reason they don't come to church is because they are older and if they have to go to the restroom, they have to leave outdoors, out through the parking lot, around through the back here to go on their walker, and they said, I can't do that. So as a priest, how do I answer that? You see what I'm saying? So these are the, this is the reason why these guys have been working, because there's a lot more issues going out there than we all realize. So it's not change this to, let's just change something. What we're doing is we are trying to answer real questions because it breaks my heart if that person really wants to come to church and they really can't. So what are we prepared to do? And that's what this is all about, not only the short term, but the long term, is what are we prepared? And we need to be prepared at any moment of the next step and be there for that. We have, this is a history of this church, and I think we can continue with this. Any other questions? Because I want to make sure that you don't walk out of here with any questions or doubts or any in your mind of what's going on, that you're excited, I hope you are, I really hope you are. Anybody else have, not just for me, any of these guys who work so hard, yeah?
Does, I can't remember, additions to the facilities have to be approved by the diocesan?
No, they do not, because we don't tell them. I know I always keep this informed, cameras, whatever they're doing, but no, it's when we have a loan. When we have a loan, then we have to let them know. Any other questions? How are you feeling? Okay, good. Please read the surveys, they have been worked on and reworked on and reworked on, and we really want to hear from you, okay? That'll be on December nineteenth. And everyone that you know will get a ballot if they have to have it in our survey. If they have to have it papered for them, that's fine, they need to come in and do it, that's fine. Just let us know how we can do it if somebody feels like they are out of, you know, they can't do it. We want, we want to hear from you. You guys, Sally.